Good evening. Welcome to Advocates for Angels Town Hall Meeting every Wednesday night. I'm Valerie Aprohian, and I'm the IEP Navigator, and I help parents get the IEP. Their child needs to thrive both in school and in life after high school. So I have some really great news that I want to share with you tonight. It's a new Office of Civil Rights case law that just was announced. It happened on August 28th, just a few days ago. But before I get into that, I want to talk about the Advocacy Roundtable coming up on September 17th, and it is at 5 o'clock Pacific time, and we are featuring Judge Mark Levine. He's a retired special education judge. He will be on the panel, as well as other amazing, powerful advocates from across the nation. We're going to be discussing how parents can address all the problems they're having with distance learning. So it's going to be just a really great event, a great webinar to help you, parents, to address how the pandemic is basically wrecking our educational system, is basically what it's doing. Kids on IEPs are struggling, they're failing, they're continuing to lose skills, and that's really the purpose of this advocacy roundtable. I'm starting to post on social regarding that, so you will be seeing the link to register. So please register early, because I don't want it to get... There's only so many people that can get on the Zoom for the live, and the people that do come on the Zoom are going to... A bonus is going to be that you're going to receive the recording. So you'll get the recording for free if you're on the live webinar. So I wanted to let everyone know about that first. And so now I'm going to talk about this amazing news, parents. This is just so awesome. I was so happy when I saw this, because this is going to address so many of the problems that all my parents in the monthly Membership Parent Brigade, these parents are facing this problem. My clients, in which I'm a one-on-one advocate for my clients, I speak on their behalf at IEP meetings. This is the main problem. And all my consultations with my parents, this is the main problem that most kids are having. It's because, right now, in California, because the governor ordered that school districts cannot provide in-person assessments. So when you ask for an assessment, your child can't be assessed in person by a school district psych or our service provider. And even if we ask for an IEE, parents, which is an independent educational evaluation, which is from a private provider, not a school district staff or employee, that private provider cannot see your child in person either because of the pandemic orders in California. Now, you might be in another state where it might be different for you, but in California, this is what's happening. So on August 28th, OAH, the Office of Administrative Hearings, grants motion for stay-put and orders in-person services during school closure in California. So they superseded Governor Newsom's orders about in-person services for our kids, you guys. This is so amazing, which this means that now, if you have services for your child, if you have any services, they must see your child in person now. You can have your child's services be provided in person instead of virtually, which isn't working for any kiddo. I mean, there's maybe a tiny percentage of kids that it might be working for and being effective, and maybe making some progress. For the large majority of kids on IEPs, virtual or telehealth doesn't work. And so, let me just read you this, what the decision was, and it is persuade to executive order N3320. CDE, the California Department of Education, clarified that services, service providers, including nurses and assistants, physical and occupational therapists, social workers, and speech pathologists are essential workers. Okay, so now, they deemed it that they are essential workers. This has been a big controversy and a fight going back and forth ever since, you know, we got the shutdown where schools were going to remain closed when school, you know, began on the first day of school, whatever that would have been in your school district. This has been a huge issue. So it goes on to say, therefore, if an individualized determination is made that a student needs services or supports in person to maintain their mental, physical health and safety for the purpose of supporting the student in accessing alternative options for learning being offered in the IEP or in distance learning, and local educational agency is not necessarily precluded from providing that service by Governor Newsom's stay-home order. Bam, right there, parents. So huge victory for us, huge victory for us. So you guys, this is what you're going to use when your school district tells you, oh, I'm sorry, we can't assess right now, because we can't do in-person assessments. And even if you ask for an IEE from a private provider, that private provider cannot see your child in person. Even if the private provider says, yes, bring your child. I'm seeing kids in person. All of my IE providers have been seeing kiddos in their offices for months now. They follow the health orders and the regulations, you know, the guidelines to remain within the Department of Health. Of course, they do. And they've been seeing kiddos, but the local school districts are saying, I'm sorry, you can't take your kid for the IEE to the office in person because of Governor Newsom's order that no in-person services or assessments can be done. This now allows us to get assessments done in person, as well as you to request your services in person by your local school district service providers, as well as private agency service providers. So this is just such amazing news, because if our kids could get their services, that's huge, because educationally, academic instruction, learning time, we know what a struggle that is for our kids. You know, they're getting tiny little bit of educational benefit, maybe, but without the services, our kids are continuing to regress and fall behind. So now, at least, we can get our related services and move forward with assessments, because assessments are so important in the development of your child's IEP. Otherwise, we were going to be stalled on assessments. We've already been stalled for six months, and it could have been stalled for another six if we weren't going to open until after Christmas break, and it could have gone on for a year and a half if it was going to go past all the way till next summer, because we don't know what's going to happen, right? There's rumblings back and forth that, oh, we're getting ready to open. They're talking about it. And then there's other teachers that's saying, we're never going to open. We're not even going to open after Christmas break. We're going to go the whole school year staying closed. Who knows what's going to happen? We don't know. No one knows. So this saves us and saves our kids' education, at least for this year, because at least they're going to get their services, and we're going to move forward with assessments and the development of your IEP, because then, when we do go back to the school grounds, you'll have your IEP all in place, because you've got to do your assessments, and you've got to do whatever your plan was on your individualized IEP, because, you know, that's always the... When I take on a case, the first thing I do is I have the child assessed in all suspected, in all areas of their suspected disability. That's how you develop an IEP, because you have to develop it off of data collection, standardized test scores, and the facts. That's the evidence that stands up in court in order for you to substantiate that your child needs an increase in speech and language, or they need a one-on-one aide that's trained in autism, or whatever it may be. You get it through assessments. So when we weren't able to get in-person assessments, that was a huge problem, as well as not being able to have services provided in person for our kiddos. So that's my big announcement for tonight. And then I want to go on, on that same vein, in talking about assessment timelines. I just want to let you parents know, because I'm still getting questions about that. Assessments must move forward. IDEA was not waived. Timelines are still in effect. So when parents, when you put in writing, I am requesting a speech and language assessment, I am requesting an occupational therapy assessment, I'm requesting a psychoeducational assessment, or I disagree with the psychoeducational assessment, and I'm requesting an IEE, an independent educational evaluation for a psychoeducational assessment conducted by a private psych or a private neuropsych. So that's how you get your assessment. After they receive your request in writing, they must respond to you within 15 days by providing you with a assessment plan, because they cannot assess your child without having you authorize signing on the assessment plan, or you will receive a prior written notice saying that they will grant your request for an IEE, and then they'll give you a release of information, so they can contract with a private agency that does not, is not an employee of the school district. You must sign a release of information to have a private agency assess your child, so that they can talk to that private provider that's not an employee of the school district, share your records with them, you talk to them, the teachers talk to them, and the school district communicate with that private provider. So then you sign a releasing information, and then you would get your IEE, and they must move forward with assessment according to the timelines, and now you can have your child assessed in person. So huge, huge, huge win for us. Now, the other thing I want to tell you about parents is, they have their distance learning plan. Now, it's official that schools that are, remain closed and are in a distance learning model, they must do a Form C now. It's called, I'm sorry, Form G. Form G is a legit distance learning plan now, that they must add to your child's IEP, and they also have to add this little statement that says, in the case of a national emergency, a pandemic, you know, an act of God, or, you know, nature, when we have a hurricane or a flood, or it's all along the same lines, that this is what will go into effect, which is the Form G plan, okay, which would cause us to go into a distance learning model. There's a little statement now there that they're required to write, but let me tell you how you cover yourself and make sure that they don't do any funny business when that happens, because this Form G distance learning plan, it's actually a mini little IEP. So on this distance learning plan, there is your services and supports. See those little boxes? That is your services and supports listed on those lines, okay? So in other words, they're going to transfer from your real IEP, your normal IEP, to the distance learning IEP, what your supports and services are. So, parents, if you aren't careful, they could decrease your services on here. If they could write, you know, on your regular IEP, it might say three times a week of 30 minutes for speech and language, and they write down on your distance learning plan, one time a week of 30 minutes for speaking language. If you don't catch it and you don't see it, they just decreased your services. So this is a scary thing, to transfer your IEP service page from your typical IEP to the Form G distance plan, because, parents, you're going to have to be on your toes and make sure that it's exactly what it's supposed to be. That's a very, very... I just caution everybody to read that thing with a fine-tooth comb and make sure it's exactly what your regular IEP is. Don't buy into any of their excuses, or their misguided, or their misinformation telling you, oh, well, in the distance learning model, we don't have to provide you the same level of services that was on your IEP, or it's not possible to provide you this or that, or whatever they say. Not true. In the distance learning model, you get the exact same IEP as you got before. Nothing changes in the distance learning model. You get the same IEP, and they must work collaboratively and creatively to innovatively come up with a way that they're going to provide you with your child's IEP. They can't make excuses that they can't do it. They can't tell you they can't do it. They can't tell you it's impossible, because everybody's been doing it now for months, and private schools are doing it like amazing, okay? So the school districts have to figure it out, and they got to do it. And so just be cautioned now about this Form G distance learning plan. So the first page is the section B for the services, the accommodations, all of your child's accommodations that are listed on the accommodations page, they also transfer that, very important, and a description of, let's see, how will your child progress toward meeting their goals? How will that be monitored? So it's progress monitoring, and also other information which may impact the implementation of the distance learning plan. Don't let them write anything in there that, you know, they're not going to be able to do it because of blah, blah, blah. They can do it, and they must do it. And then it looks like there's a parent contact log, so this is just other administrative stuff. But that's the most important thing, is your services, your accommodations, that must look the same as your real IEP, because you don't want to let them change anything. And as I said, now, they must provide your services in person and do assessments in person. So it is there, there is a section C that says, description of IEP services and supports delivered through alternative or additional methods by the local educational agency for this student during an extended closure for a distance learning plan. So they're supposed to write a description of how those services and supports will be delivered. So you're going to make sure that you say, put in there in person for my services, because now they can do it. Okay? So, and I want to tell you just a little example of a true, real-life situation, advocacy situation, that I just had today in a virtual IEP meeting, where the math teacher, this was, it's a student in high school. He has a young man with autism, and he is not non-verbal, but he has very limited speech. And so he is doing his distance learning, you know, the virtual learning. He's on class, and he has taken regular, all the regular high school classes. He's on the diploma track, so he's taken all the typical classes that any high schooler would take. So the math class, which, and these are all special ed classes, the math teacher said, well, the mom called me before the meeting and said, I don't like how the math teacher is handling this, because when my son and I go on for the math class, the math teacher immediately sends my son and the aide to a breakout room and doesn't allow him to stay on the regular classroom for life academic instruction with the rest of the class. She just sends him away to the breakout room with the aide. And that's discrimination and segregation. That is not allowed, that she can't do that. And so I asked her in the IEP today, why are you doing, why are you sending him off to the breakout room and not allowing him to remain on the, you know, virtual distance learning for your academic instruction class teaching time? And she said, well, because when the aide prompts him and, you know, wants to help him, everybody in the whole class can hear, because she's talking while I'm talking, and it's very disruptive to the rest of the class. And so what that is, parents, is that because the aide needs to prompt the child, or the student, he's a young man, because the aide needs to prompt him in order for him to access the general ed curriculum, be successful in learning, because he needs the prompting and the support from his aide, she is saying you have to be segregated off into another breakout room. Nope, that's not okay. That is against the law. You can't do that, because a child needs support to be in the class with the rest of his peers. That is the right of that student. That is the purpose of supports, is so that the child can remain in the class with the rest of the peers and learn, along with the rest of the class. You don't push them off to some other environment. That's least restrictive environment. That's violating least restrictive environment, LRE. So then I argued, and I said, well, we need to come up with a better way to figure this out, then, so that he can receive his support from the aide and remain with the peers and listening and learning from you, the teacher. Aide isn't a teacher. An aide can instruct him and teach him. So we went round and round, and then I suggested, why don't you let the aide be on the cellphone, so that the aide is prompting him on the phone, and he can hear the aide talking to him and breaking things down and prompting him and giving him cues and redirecting him, but it's not coming right onto the Zoom where everybody's hearing, right, the rest of the classes hearing and interrupting the teacher instruction. And then the principal piped up and went, well, I don't know if we can do that, because I have to go and ask the Human Resources Department if that's allowed, because then that means we have to provide an iPhone, or we have to provide a phone for the student, for the aide, because, you know, that would be like an assistive technology, a piece of equipment in order to provide services that way. And I'm just like, oh, dear God, why are you making it so, you know, everybody's got a phone. She can use her phone. It doesn't have to come through the school district for her to use her phone to prompt the kid. So, you know, and I wouldn't back down. And so then they finally came around to saying, okay, you know, we'll do it that way. But they would have just done that. So these are the kind of things that they can't do that kind of stuff, parents, to your kid. They have to still, all the laws remain in effect, least restricted environment remains in effect, inclusion. Your child gets equal rights to every other kiddo that doesn't have a disability, or, you know, if you're, to meet your child's unique needs, that you can't discriminate against them, because they have needs. So you got to be aware of these kinds of things, as we're going through these virtual IEPs and receiving virtual education at this time. So I wanted to give you that example of things that are going down now in IEP meetings, that you need to be aware of, and don't let them take advantage of you and discriminate against your child. Okay? So that's my spiel for tonight, guys. So who has any comments on what I just talked about? Or questions? What do you guys think about now you get in-person services? It's pretty awesome.
I think it's amazing. Now they have no way out.
Yeah, and thank you, Barbara, because you were the one that sent that article to me this morning. Yeah, I'm so busy working, you know, I have my time that I do research to keep up on everything, but I've been working on my Roundtable webinar coming up. So I'm not, I'm not doing as much research as I normally do. So I was like, when I opened that up and read it, I was like, I was so happy.
Don't worry. I've always, you know me, I've always sent you whatever I found right away.
Thank you.
I know you're busy fighting for our kids. So I think I'd rather have you do that, and I'll, I have the time, because I have shared with all my other Hispanic moms. I'm the one that has to translate the whole document, too.
Yeah. Yep, that was just such, oh my gosh. I've been waiting for that to happen. I'm so glad. And this is all because a mom in Arcadia did a due process hearing, and she won. So this becomes case law now, how they're going to move forward from now on. It's an amazing victory for us, you guys. I can't even tell you how amazing that is, because if this happens again, now we're covered. They can't tell us we can't have in-person anymore.
And this judge, it's amazing, too, Valerie. We are very lucky that she has become a judge.
Yeah.
Because she has a child with autism herself, so she understands the whole process.
Yeah, that is so awesome, so awesome. Well, now, there's so many kiddos with autism today, that, you know, almost everybody either has a kid with autism, or it's someone has in their family a child with autism, or like they have a best friend of a child. So autism has affected everyone's lives at this point. So, yeah, it's good. It's good. We've come so far, you guys, from when I had Chanel. Chanel was born in 1991, and so it was 1994 and '95 when I was advocating for her to, you know, to get an education and get her IEP developed and all of that. And they didn't know how to do inclusion back then. They were just so discriminatory, and they just segregated kids into severely handicapped classes, and it was horrible, horrible back then. And we've just come a long way. Now, you know, not to say that, you know, we just still have a lot of, you know, changes that need to be made, that's for sure. And a lot of school districts are still fighting parents, still discriminating against our kids. There's still some real bad school districts out there. But in terms of our rights and IDEA, we've come a long way, which is another reason why, you know, I've been screaming all summer long with all of this shutdown, and how school districts have reverted. I feel sometimes like we're back in the early 90s, the way school districts are treating kids on IEPs. And I keep saying, our rights are being dismantled. IDEA is being dismantled, because we've come so far, and they're slowly chipping away to back in the early 90s and late 80s, because they're taking our rights away. And that's why I've been saying, they can't do this. You know, they're just telling parents, oh, we can't do this, we can't do that. They're not implementing the IEP. They're not giving us, they're not giving us IEP meetings, all that crap that happened back in March, April, May, and June. It's like IDEA was just fizzled out into the universe and was gone. And it was like, are you kidding me? What's happening? Like, we're in an alternate universe or something? Like, where did all of our rights go? So, but now it's starting to come back, you know, to, okay, here's the law again. This is what they got to do. You know, they got to remain, enforce the law. But if you guys don't know this stuff, then you just, you guys allow it. That's just what it comes down to. Parents allow them to tell you lies, and they get away with it, or tell you misinformation, or tell you things that aren't true. And because I, you know, when they can't, they don't say that to me when I'm on an IEP meeting, because I know when they're doing something that's wrong, and they know I'm going to disagree with it, and put them in their place and say, I don't think so. And then they go, oh, okay, okay, we can take care of that. We'll fix that. But if you don't stand up to them and say that, they'll just go right ahead and write it in your IEP and take advantage of you, which is why I'm doing this, to train parents, to train you, and have the brigade, so that I give you the tools and the education and the knowledge you need, so that doesn't happen to you. So...
Valerie, what do we do now? Okay, now, we have this case, but, for example, most of my moms, oh, I have 12 moms, that all the kids, all of a sudden, they took them out of summer school. According to them, none of my 12 kiddos qualify for summer school. I did request it via email to, for them to give me prior reading notice, and they never responded. All 12.
What do you mean by taking them out of summer school? What does that mean?
They had ESY, and they had the IEP meeting prior, like, a week before school was over, and they told all my parents that none of their kids did qualify for summer school.
They told them that no other kid qualified for summer school?
My kids, I mean, each kid, like, each family, they told each family individually that their that their child did not qualify any longer for E S Y. And we were, I told them, well, do you didn't even get in any parent input in my, we are just as part of the team like everybody else.
Yes.
And they told, well, your child does not qualify for E S Y. So I told them, well, if we, we did not sign the I E P, so isn't that supposed to be stay put?
Yes.
And.
It's supposed to be stay put.
They did not respond to.
So let me tell you, let me ask him questions. So was E S Y in the previous I E P before they called that meeting? Did they have?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Oh, they violated, I've counted up three violations already. So if that, if E S Y was already in the previous I E P, then when, when they, you don't agree and you don't sign, stay put remains in effect and that previous I E P must, must be implemented. So they violated stay put order because they didn't give them summer school because that, that remains in effect. That's number one, they violated stay put. Number two, they have to have an I E P team discussion about, because the eligibility for E S Y is, is your child going to significantly regress in their skills if they don't receive summer school intervention? So there's that discussion and everybody goes around the table and says, well, I don't think the kid's going to regress. And then someone else will say, oh, I think they're going to regress because, you know, during Christmas break of three weeks, they come back and that, and they've regressed. So they'll absolutely regress in summer school. And everybody gives their opinion around the table. And then the mom has a chance to talk and say, I absolutely, my, my child will regress and give some examples of in the past how they regressed when there was a period of time when they got no services or intervention. And then they'll, they'll make a determination and they'll say, well, we don't think he's going to regress. So we're not, we're gonna not gonna give E S Y. Or yes, we believe he will regress and we will give him E S Y. That needs to be in the notes, that discussion, and then they make their determination. That's how E S Y is determined. So.
They even, they even send the parent the, the I E P meeting like the, like few hours before the meeting. And it was already written in the, in the team action notes that they were taking all the child off E S Y.
Okay, well, that's predetermination. That's, there's a violation number four. Predetermination of the I E P before they even have the meeting. Violation of parent rights.
And they never responded to their prior reading notice that I requested for all my parents.
And then violation for not providing a prior written notice. So that's four violations right there. That you could file a compliance complaint on four violations.
I'm gonna have to do for all twelve of them. Oh, my God, okay.
But the thing is, is that once you write the first one, they're all going to be the same.
Yeah, they're all the same, yeah, they're all the same.
Yeah, and so you guys, I just, if you're, you're in the brigade, I just posted form letters, templates for compliance complaints. So and I give the codes for a compliance complaint for failure to provide an assessment, compliance complaint for failure to provide an I E P. And I, I give you, I gave you the templates, how to write a compliance complaint. So it's in the brigade, the additional resources section.
Oh, that's gonna help tremendously. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi Valerie, um, this is Redora.
Hi, Redora.
So, um, in regards to, we talked about on the weekends in the live call. So about the one hundred eighty instructional minutes.
Right.
So I, I forward you the email. I don't know if you got it already, but, um, yeah, so I, at first I did what Barbara said, like to ask, oh, you know, when will he receive his like one hundred eighty minutes? So I think they're like kind of trying to play dumb, like, oh, yeah, we, he won't get it till like next week, starting September eighth and like, I'm like, I could have, like, you know, according to information they got, like, the new S B ninety-eight starts like September first.
That's right.
I was just wondering why the school is still not paying, she started receiving their services minutes and then she still insists on, yeah, we're gonna do it on the eighth. And then finally I said, like, you know, the, the new law says, you know, this and this and that. And I think she forwarded to the the principal and then the principal said that they're going, they're, they're own, she mentioned, let me read to you what she said.
She said what?
Let me go try to find the email. She said something like the, something they're following that A seven, A B seventy-seven or according to what they have in their record is what they're following by in the, something like that, let me give it.
Ninety-eight is the most recent one and it supersedes all the previous.
Okay. Yeah, I think she's going by the previous ones.
Yeah, they can't do that. Yeah, that's what they're doing. Yeah, lots of districts are going back to one seventeen too, which is, which says a bunch of crap too. It gives temporary waivers, which was way long time ago in March. That's over. Yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety-eight is what they must do now. They must follow ninety-eight.
Okay, so then I could still like, you know, insist on how you're going to make up those hours. Because I keep asking them like, so how are you guys going to make up those hours? You know, since you guys are not doing live calls and then my kid is only like getting like twenty, thirty minutes for two, for two days out of that whole week.
So was this an I E P meeting you were having this discussion about it?
No, I just keep emailing them.
Emailing. Okay, well, you have your evidence that you requested in an email, you know, when is my kid going to get their minutes they're supposed to get between the first and the eighth? And, and so the, the thing you have to make sure you did was, you have to, instead of asking a question and then that just makes it a conversation, that's not a legally binding request. You have to make sure you say, I am requesting that all of my services and instructional minutes required by S B ninety-eight be made up from September first to September eighth. That's how you have to say it.
Okay.
Okay, not just a conversation or asking questions because then that's not a legally binding request. If you filed a compliance complaint, then they would say, well, the mom never asked for that. She just asked questions about it.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I'll make sure I put, I'm requesting for it then.
And then you'd be really specific about what you're requesting, just like I just said it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing, Valerie, that I just realized here in San Diego, what they're doing too is that they are only providing two hours with the kids with academics this whole first week because according to them, the teachers are spending one hour in training. So they are only providing the kiddos two hours. Is it the same thing? Okay.
Same answer as what I just gave to Redora. I don't give a crap what they're doing with the teachers. That, that's, that's the law. They have to follow the law, S B, S B ninety-eight. They have, those, those instructional minutes that I've been talking about go into effect. They went into effect on the first, which was yesterday. So as of yesterday, they should have been doing it.
Awesome.
And yeah, they, that's nice that they're training the teachers. They should have trained the teachers before school started, before the first. Right?
Yeah, yeah, she's, oh, this is what she said. She said, this is per our district plan, the S B ninety-eight and their A B seventy-seven is what they're going by. And then that the first week is not really instructional, it's more like meeting the parents.
It says that where?
What, what she emailed me back is her reply to my request.
Ask her, where does it say that in S B ninety-eight? Because I read it and I didn't see that anywhere. I read it, they are responsible on September first. They've already had two or three weeks to get to know them. But now, when did you guys start? You guys started a little later.
We just started on Monday, the thirty-first. So they're, they're having it as this week, they're meat and grease kind of thing.
That's not what the law, that's what, not what S B ninety-eight says. It says September first, all school districts, this is Califor, all of California, that must do it.
Okay, I will reply.
Like Corona started three weeks ago. So they've just been dicking around for three weeks and doing that, getting to know you. The teachers are just, you know, having fun and not doing much. But now September first, they gotta be on it and they gotta be doing it. So you guys, unfortunately, too bad for those teachers, they, they started the day before September first. And, oh, well, they still gotta follow the law.
Yeah, it's like, okay, what are we doing now? We're just fiddling our tongue, like waiting, like, okay, you don't even give instruction.
Yeah, so, yeah, you, so you make your request that way. And let them, that you know your rights and that you're not going to stand for that. And then I, I'm still gotta write, help you write that email. I just have been super, super busy, but I'm going to be getting to that probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Do you guys have any questions that you want me to answer? Like, um, coming up in Facebook Live on Monday or next Wednesday's town hall? Set topics you want me to speak on that you're kind of stuck on or that you're doing right now? Because I want to make sure I'm teaching and coaching you on what you guys need. I'm just kind of going off of as new things come out and change, then that's what I'm talking about. But if you need specific things, I'd be happy to focus on that. Everybody's good then?
I think we're all just going with the flow because every day is something new.
What was happening?
I, I think right now, like, all of us are just going with the flow because every day they try to come up with so much excuse not to provide our kiddo services, you know what I mean?
Yep, well, like I said, you guys, you just gotta hold them accountable and there, there are no excuses, you guys. There are no excuses. I, I don't care what they say. They're training or they're this or they're that. They, they'll come up with every excuse under the sun. If you buy it, then they're going to give it. There is no excuse. And so you just have to keep quoting, you know, these, these legal bills and the statutes that I tell you and what to say. And you have to keep, you know, keep your logs going. Make sure you keep your logs, you guys, the ones that you did, you know, before, keep them, you keep them going for this, this year too, every day. You, you'll find the logs on the brigade website. It's under, it's on the actions, the actions page. It says, um, action guide, action guide. So in the action guide, at the, at the, at the back of the action guide, I give you logs, charts, even like a, um, an Excel, what's, what is that thing called? You know, that one program where you can plug in things. So I give you everything that you need to take data collection every day on your child, on how they're learning, what they're doing. Do they have behaviors? Are they getting online? Are they, you know, having, you know, tantrums? Or my kid got online today for ten minutes and then they, then they ran away and I couldn't get them back and we didn't get any other instruction for the rest of the day because I couldn't get them back. Whatever's happening, you keep a log every day. Because those are the things you want to bring to your next I E P meeting and say, I need you, district, to figure this out for me. Like I keep saying, it's not your problem, you guys. You do your best to assist your child to access and get online. But there, it's their problem to figure out, how are we going to address this child's behaviors? Because they're not learning. It's not your job to figure it out. They're the ones that have the autism training. They're the ones that have the behavioralists, B C B A, you know, trained behavioralists. They're the ones that are the speech and language pathologists and the occupational therapists and the teachers. They have the knowledge and the education and the experience. You bring it back to them and put it back in their lap and ask, what are you going to do? Because my child's going to go another six months without receiving an education. And you bring it back to them.
They're going as far as suggesting the parents to medicate their kids. They're like, maybe you should start medication, that might help.
Yeah.
But then they, they're, but they're, they're refusing to assess the kiddos, which is like, okay, no. No, we're not going to give anything. You, you won't even assess the child.
They have to assess the child, just like I just talked about. If they don't, then that's a, that's a violation, that's a complaint.
That's another one. Most of my kiddos, because they're going from kindergarten into first grade, most of them needed I E P triennials before the pandemic. None of them had received triennial assessments yet, nothing.
So, yeah, so I know that happened all over the place. Because they stopped assessments, they stopped I Ps, they stopped everything. So now they're playing catch up. And now they should be making up all the I Ps that they didn't have in March, April, May. And they should be starting on all the assessments that they owe from March, April and May. And now they can do assessments in person. So if they're not making a concerted effort in a reasonable timeframe to make up the assessment or the I E P, that's a violation. They need to be making up what they didn't do in March, April, May.
So Valerie, so they need to make up these instructional minutes lost. My daughter started school like in the middle of August. I just heard from the R S P teacher, I think it was yesterday. So they have to make up those minutes from last year?
You can ask, yes. So you can ask them, that's called compensatory education or compensatory services because they failed to provide in March, April, May. So it has to be done in a very specific manner, how you ask it. You have to write, either write a letter requesting that those things be made up or you have a, in an I E P meeting, if you have a meeting, you're going to make that request. You're going to document it in your parent agenda. I'm requesting that all my services and academic instruction time be made up for the district failing to provide it in March, April, May, in whatever it is, June. And then they're going to tell you, oh, no, we don't have to do that because the schools shut down and we weren't held accountable. But yes, they were held accountable because Secretary DeVos said there are no waivers to I D A, meaning I D A remained in effect and they must adhere to the same laws that were before. But school districts across the nation are saying, we're not going to give makeup services. So it's only the parents that know how to push it and appeal when they deny and provide the right requests in writing, those are the ones that are going to receive it. So what happens is they'll have a discussion as an I E P team. And they'll say, okay, how much has the child regressed because they didn't receive March, April, May, June? And then if there was summer school, if your child was receiving E S Y, how much regression took place in the last six months? And of course, a lot of regression has taken place in six months of a child not receiving an education. Now, how they come to that determination is because they have to look at your child's present levels of academic performance, the P L O A P. That's on your I E P at the very beginning. It'll have progress on goals, right? And then it'll have, right there, it'll say, present levels of performance for your child. They have to determine what your child's current level of present levels of performance are. And then look back at what they were in March, before schools closed. And that's how you're going to tell how much your child's regressed. So that's what the law says is that when, when schools reopen, not just we open in the building, but when school starts again for the two thousand twenty, two thousand one, twenty-one school years, the districts are obligated to discuss the child's current present levels of performance and determine how much regression occurred back from March. And that's the discussion then, how are we going to recoup or provide a recovery plan for this child because we didn't give them what they were supposed to get in March, April, May and June? And they have to come up with something for you.
Okay.
So that, that's the discussion that you want them to have. But you have to really hold them to it. Otherwise, they're just going to brush you off and move right on. But you have to really hold them to it, otherwise they're just gonna brush you off and move right on. Because you have to think about it, there's, you know, thousands of kids in every school district that they didn't serve. So if they can get away with saying no, they're gonna say no to most every parent. Right? Cause they can't, how are they gonna make up all that time?
I know.
Right? So you gotta be a parent that knows how to get it, so your kid gets the makeup time. Cause they really do legally, they're held accountable legally to it, that's their duty.
Yes. I know the RSP teacher that was at her school is no longer at the school. It's a different one, I don't know why they started yesterday, I'm thinking, cause they're on a different track than my daughter's school. But it's just kind of like fishy, like, well, how come they didn't do nothing those last months when she was in third grade? And how come it took this long until to, like yesterday, for them to get the ball rolling? Like it just doesn't make sense.
I'll tell you why, because September 1st was the deadline for them to start doing what they're supposed to do. So there was a bill called SB 98 that, that came into play that said, um, school districts must adhere to the required instructional academic minutes that must be provided in virtual schooling. And what that equals is a, a minimum day, a half day. And so it's not a full day of school like we would normally have in the school building. They're allowed to, to only have to provide a half day now.
Okay.
That's why it started on September 1st, because that, that law said it has to start in September 1st. But Corona Norco started, like I said earlier, three weeks before September 1st. So they've just been fooling around that, for three weeks until September 1st. Now they're getting, they're, they're moving, because they have to, cause it's September 1st.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's why, you're welcome. Anybody else, guys? Everybody's good? Okay, guys, well, um, you can always ask me questions on the Advocates for Angels page, but it's actually better for you to ask me questions on the, uh, Special Education Parent Empowerment Network group page, cause that's the private group page and that's better to communicate with me on that page. And then, cause that, that's the private group page that mostly only parents are on that page. And, and I like to, you know, give more advocacy advice on that page. Cause my Advocates for Angels page, I like to use more just for resources, to post good articles and stuff on, information. But the private group page is where I'll communicate more one-on-one with you. And then of course, if you're in the parent brigade, then you have much more access to me. So you're gonna post on the parent brigade and you guys aren't going on the parent brigade Facebook page. You need to more, be more active on there. I, I posted, uh, last Saturday's brigade replay on the, uh, Facebook page. And it's also on the website for, for you that, uh, missed last Saturday's brigade live call. Okay, guys? So, um, I'll see you Monday on Facebook Live and next Wednesday on the town hall. And be look, on the lookout for the webinar, advocacy roundtable webinar, social posts. Because there, I already sent out one that says, mark your calendar, but now it's gonna come out with the link to register. So share it with all the other moms that you guys know, because you, we wanna help as many moms as we can, uh, to get the help that they need. So thanks you guys and I'll see you soon.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.